Mark Schveth. Thanks, Amanda. Thank you. I wanted to share with you folks something I alluded to in the last workshop we had with the selectmen about some notes that we had back in 2008 with our assessors because these questions, I guess, are going to be coming up a little bit again. If there are any left over of this. And tentatively, Jennifer told me that the town assessor is going to be available to chat with anyone who's interested next Wednesday at 11:00 AM if anybody wanted to attend a meeting at that time. Mr. O'Donnell might be interested in helping us get our hands around some of the issues that the selectmen are raising. Jess, after talking to you the other night, I picked up some material that might...
You are all so patient. I appreciate your patience.
I made some copies with President's good help of a report that I just came across the other day issued by an outfit that some of you might be familiar with called the Natural Resources Council of Maine. They're basically a legislative interface lobbying group for environmental issues. They've been around for, I think, probably 20-plus years. And this report goes to a point that I tried to make in our meeting last time we met following the selectman's workshop, that we're kind of on our own in terms of looking after lake water quality these days because of some of the lack of support, I guess would be a fair way to say it, that the DEP is getting in their role of public advocate for water quality. And I'm hoping everybody has a chance to read it over the next couple of weeks. It's...I was very impressed with the quality of the report in terms of the depth that they went to develop the facts that they've laid out for us here. And it just kind of underscores the point in my mind that we have an important job in terms of taking care of our lakes. Let's look at the minutes. I'll sit. Can I make a motion?
Will we accept the minutes as presented?
I'll take it.
Thank you. I'll sit.
That's right.
Got a question?
Yeah. The meeting was called to order by Tom Cashion.
Okay.
Chip the vessel back.
It was in its spirit, I guess.
Thank you. I will fix that.
Okay. I was hoping that we would have a little discussion regarding the workshop tonight and maybe have a work plan to follow the discussion, I guess. Any thoughts after thinking about what was said to be spoke with the selectmen?
I think that's going to sort itself out at the town meeting. It's going to be two...
Yep. I guess so. Yeah.
Three.
Three.
Three articles. Two from the selectman was from the plane of void. There are going to be two from the selectman.
One of the article was to build the resource protection conditional use to the plane of void. And the other one was to remove the 2 to 10 acre wetlands out of the shoreline zone. And then the plane of void article was to build the resource protection out of the shoreline zone.
Kenny, when you say two articles, how's...our article includes the amendments on land use, Chad and Mr. Dustin, where do you get the two articles?
The selectmen? Do we have a copy of the verbiage of what was presenting as the second article?
We have this.
Yeah. It's just that it's right here. This is all it is.
That's the second.
Right.
4224 and 4226.
Correct. 4224 was what I have labeled as number two.
Yep. And we did not have that because we weren't making a change.
We didn't have either one of them yet.
But they are keeping in their second proposal, they are keeping the shoreline, shoreline area down to two acres, it's two up and up. They are keeping that part. It's just what they're eliminating completely is all the inland shoreline, inland woodland shoreline.
Well, and there was some confusion arising in the use of shoreline. We have no...well, I shouldn't take that because some of our little bonds are going to go down. I agree with the tenants, but in my area, this is fine if I can. So there is...I was looking at this a little bit today. Most of the resource protection in shoreline, Ken, I'm looking at the great ponds along the easterly border here, primarily this one over by East Shore Drive or West...
West Shore.
Yeah, East Shore Drive, excuse me.
Yeah.
And this one on...yeah, one that communicates from across Milton-Melrose. And when I look at those, a question comes up in my mind, what are we going to do with the...this one is the clearest one.
Those three should have question marks on them, and they do on my ledger. Southern Maine Regional has question marks on those, that those are possibly in shoreline zone, and they wouldn't do it. So what this map is, is these black wetland areas would be 2 to 10 acres outside of the shoreline zone. So your article that you're putting forward would allow people to build with a conditional use in the black zones. The selectmen's article would remove the black zones. So that's the difference between that two. The other selectmen's articles would allow building in resource protection all over town, all these areas with conditional use through you guys. So one article would allow building in resource protection.
Before you go on, I have a question that I wanted to just say. The smaller wetlands are being omitted, just basically proposed.
Proposed.
But the larger wetlands that are in the shoreline zone, and by in the shoreline zone, don't they have to be contiguous, either contiguous to a great pond? And like this one is quite clear to me. I don't know if there'd be debate on this one or not.
Well, it's probably excess of 10 acres of open wetlands. So I know this one here expanded out. So there's still a lot of resource protection that exceeds the state level in town in stream protection. But the only thing that is on the warrant would be to remove the 2 to 10 acres forested wetlands outside of the resource protection. It was a total of...
How sorry, resource protection or outside shoreline?
Outside shoreline. It was a total of 901 acres.
That are in this...
In the black. 182 lots are affected.
Half my properties.
When I had a question, it didn't come up the other night, and I don't know how the selectmen, if they're aware of it or if I'm just not understanding something here. But on, say, this one here, where the state and we would look at this as RP in the shoreline zone.
Denervally state. Yeah. Those were the three that Southern Maine felt a little fuzzy on.
Fuzzy on?
They thought they're in shoreline zone and prematurely printed the map.
When you say those three, I'm looking at this big thing here.
Yeah. Yeah, that's not being touched at all. It's these black ones right there.
Why can't you see them?
22, 23, and 24.
With the yellow staying, right?
Correct.
But what I'm driving at here is if it's RP in the shoreline zone, how would the state look if...I mean, can you build within 100-foot setback of that? Technically, if it's in the shoreline zone, you can't build within 100 feet.
If it's a waterfront setback, no, you'd have to meet that. And you'd have to meet road setbacks, side setbacks, everything.
Right, right. But the...
That would be through the conditional use with you guys.
Right. But this would be, overall, this would pertain in those live wetlands that are over 10 acres that are directly contiguous to the squib ponds triggering there being in the shoreline zone. There is essentially, you would have a building area that would be from 250 to 100 feet. Am I right?
150, the building envelope. So if it's got a 250-foot buffer around the swamp edge, the first 100, they're not going to be able to build in.
You're going upland now?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I'm...
Or if it's a stream setback, 75 foot or however it is.
Okay. What is your take on this one, Ken?
Resource protection, upland edge of the...
We spotted this.
Yeah, it could be 75 feet or it's 100, there's a setback from the edge of the wetland.
Okay.
And again, I would assume through conditional use process, they're going to be moved as far away as practical. And most of that, we'd weed out in our office, you know, when plans come in, there's plenty of room to move and relocate, especially if we can get them out of the resource protection. That's going to be the first objective.
Right. That's what I was thinking, the planning will still get a sway to where that is going to go.
And then condition it.
I still have reservations about throwing our compromise out the window because I thought it was well thought through and made sense. It still gave, it was an even-handed compromise between the takings of the property rights issue and the resource protection issue we're wrestling. So I, after listening to their rationale the other night, which is largely financially based, if I'm understanding the dialogue we had, I am questioning the wisdom of allowing incursions well enough. Because our compromise is allowing conditional incursions into the resource protection outside of shoreline zone. And where our proposal further maintains the integrity of the larger resource protection zones that are directly contiguous with our great ponds. And I think those functions of recharge, stormwater management, it slows the, it takes up excess runoff, you know, with big storm events, releases it slowly, and the wildlife habitat are three criterion that I think is a good reason for our holding the line and not following suit of the selectman's proposal. And they're both cast in ink, and I like that. I feel comfortable with our compromise, and I think it largely addresses their issues because the whole notion of, I've never been involved in an abatement process nor on the board of assessment review, so I don't really know the mechanics of that. But it would be largely if you were putting a landowner in a situation where they were totally unable to, and the terminology here is lots created since 2000, 9/29/11. Is that correct?
Close out.
This only pertains to, in both cases, lots created after 9/29/11, is that right?
Lots before the adoption, the lots would have to have been there before.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, you can't create a lot after the resource protection's been adopted.
So I am, I think we struck a good middle path. And I think it's easily defensible on not just the resource base, but still getting educated about this whole notion of the abatements. We tried to, Chip and I tried to follow up a little bit on Bob's request for a list of the abatements that had occurred since, we got paperwork from 2008 or '09 all the way through 2014. And this is part of the reason why I'd like to meet with O'Donnell next Wednesday, because they were, Jennifer walked me through, there were four pages from, that covered 2011 to '14. And on those four pages, there were four that came to a total abatement amount of monies returned to the applicant of a little over $1,000. And I was thinking today, $1,000 is nothing to scoff at, but in that time of the three-year period, I didn't total it out, but there were, I think on the order of 30 new houses. So to put this in perspective, I think you have to kind of look at number of housing stocks, additions and renovations. You know, it's not a total net loss on budgets and NSA in the workshop. I think this is a process of kind of dwindling out, and there'll be, you know, there might be a few of these every year for a couple of years, and then I think they will go away and there won't be any more. Just figures for you. July 11 through June 12, 16 new homes. July 12 through '13, 11 new homes. July 13 through '14, 13 new homes. If you put that against four abatements, I think you're still quite solidly in the black. You know what I'm saying? In terms of revenues received and revenues expended because of straightening out some land use issues. I'm still in the learning curve on this, so I don't want to, I'm just relating to the information that I've gotten so far.
So are you saying from 2011 to 2014 are only four?
Four that Jennifer styled for me and said, "O'Donnell can explain these in depth to you," but it was a land use issue.
And it was about $1,000 each or $1,000 total?
A $1,000 total was involved in approximately monies returned, and don't quote me on that because I didn't bring that paperwork with me, but there was a ballpark. Monies returned to the property owners because of some adjustments that were made in the land values there. So it sounded kind of frightening with what, you know, the case that Ted was making the other night, but I'm not sure if it holds up to close examination or not. And I think we certainly owe it to the townspeople not to be passing on a bit of planning that is going to break the towns' bank. But it does bring up the issue of the value judgments that are made when, and you, Ken, help us on this, do you have the hat of an assessor open like that?
No.
You have a private...
Assessor.
Do you interface with that process at all?
What does Table 3 mean?
It's a whole assessing department and a board of assessors and all that, so.
It's up to you all.
You guys don't give me something. But there are value judgments.
It's on the old site, on all our assessments.
There are value judgments made. There are value judgments made when these decisions are arrived at. And I'm just wondering whether part of the decision-making involves maybe a, if there's a good balance between maintaining the integrity and having faith in the legal integrity of zoning versus caving in and just saying to the first guy who's red in the face, "Okay, here's your money back because we don't want to get involved in a lawsuit." I don't think it's that simple, but there is some equation there that I think may involve a lack of, lack of faith in the zoning itself in terms of, we don't want to be challenged on this, so this is the easy path to follow. The old standard that we used to use years and years ago, and it still stands, it hasn't been contested in court, as I mentioned this on occasion. If the landowner can create an individual private campsite, the town is not subject to the charge of takings. I asked that of a lawyer that I worked with in another, in another nonprofit, another group that I belong to, and she said, "It has never been challenged, and it would probably withstand the challenge," the whole notion of the individual property campsite threshold. So we are going way beyond that in our implementation of our proposal to allow the incursions in the RP buffers by having a, you know, a set of quite open-handed guidelines, you know, thresholds that have to be met. I feel very strongly that we are certainly covered in terms of any legal challenges that could be raised in terms of what we're proposing.
Do we know how many lots potentially this applies to?
182.
And what is that?
There's actually more there, but if it just, the buffer just hit the lot a little bit, we didn't look at it. So that's something O'Donnell's would really have to look at to say, is it the back of the lot, does it really matter, is it going to affect, or is it the front of the lot, you can't drive through the resource, do you use the lot? So that's something they would have to look at lot by lot by lot, see what the real difference is.
But that's the part I was making when I said that, I think if we hold the line, well, the line's already there in terms of its heading to town meeting. If we held the line on our thinking at that town meeting and said, "We've introduced a process by which we can reach a fair arbitration here with the landowner through the conditional use process that allows incursion," I think we're on a good ground there. I mean, all of this work was thoroughly vetted by the state at the DEP level, and the town lawyer went over it with a fine-tooth comb. So it's not like this was created in some kind of looney land. It was well-vetted before it went to town meeting.
Well, I came up with a question when I looked at my property, at the assessment of it, because we, for some reason, the last assessment, everyone was done in 2010, right?
Do you think we should be talking about your property as a plan?
Well, I just, it's an example. It's an example of a property in town, Tom. Anyway, for some reason, we have two acres, we were assessed one way in one year, and then it got changed in July of 2011. And on our little table, where it lists, you know, how they break down your property, they actually took two acres of wetlands and devalued it, which was, you know, fine by us, but not the buffers, just the wet, the two acres of, it's just, it's in this, one of these black areas. And when I sampled other properties around town, nobody else had that. So I didn't know what it meant.
Are you able to maybe attend Wednesday's meeting?
Maybe.
Okay. I wish you would hold these questions and tell that, because we can't answer.
Well, it is interesting if the town doesn't kind of automatically adjust people's rate that they have to come forward and...
That was a question when the proposed zoning was put out there, was the town going to go and do town-wide reassessment and drop everybody's taxes that had the RP and they haven't done a reevaluation?
That was my question.
Well, that's partly, you can see that we delved into that a little bit with that note, notes from the reports from the assessor or something that I handed out tonight.
Those were from 2008, right?
That's when, you know, we were starting to think about it from the start.
Right. Not just the second, I was thinking, ever more recent?
They had an assessment in '09 or something, a full nine or 10?
Yeah, you said it's a five-year cycle.
Anyone know when the next one is due?
No.
Virginia, would you know?
No.
Well, I'd be curious to hear what anyone else thinks about, you know, I don't see this as going toe-to-toe with the selectmen. They have a concern, and they're taking it to the voters in the form of what they're doing. I just, personally, as a resident of Acton, I would question whether or not the resource angle of this has been... angle of this has been weighed with the same scrutiny as their financial concerns, I guess. And that's what raises that same notion in my mind pertaining to the assessment process.
They're going to give some numbers to us, right, on the financial one of that?
Well, Ted, I looked at that workshop again, and Ted said, or I think Bob asked him, right, "This would be for the public hearing." And Ted said, "Yeah." But there is some kind of a map in the works or something? Or is that this?
Probably that right there.
Oh, okay. Do you know if O'Donnell's going to be kind of scrutinizing this and doing some homework on behalf of that?
They may look at it. I don't know how much time he's going to put into it. He may just have an opinion of what threshold there is to reduce it.
Yeah. Is there any thought that we ought to pursue maybe a public hearing a month or something leading up to our...we've already had...
Already had?
One public hearing. I don't know if that was categorized as our official one or not. We have, by the calendar...did Jen get ahold of you for that?
Yeah, Chip had talked...he wanted to set the date next, at the next meeting, but he's thinking the last Thursday in April. There's five Thursdays in April, so there's no selectmen and no planning board that night.
Five Thursdays. We meet on the first and third. I don't care how many there are.
Right, right. Selecting the second and fourth. So on the fifth...
So it wouldn't take away anyone's meeting, but I don't know. I think we might want to have a public hearing before then to get some feedback from the public so we can really juxtapose the two plans to them so they understand what they're voting on as opposed to just a week ahead or, you know, when you come down close to the date, it's fewer people are going to have access to the...
There's certain criteria you need so close, so far.
Well, we have to have another one as well.
You can have multiple. You can have this on the agenda until June.
Well, I mean, I'd like to see more, you know, more than just the one prior to the town meeting.
I don't think we can have the selectmen's and then the...
No.
Discuss the public hearing put on by the planning board.
It would just be out strictly.
We couldn't do any sort of comparison between the two?
Yes.
It would just be discussion. You think we could?
The...
Because I don't know.
I don't think it's going to be in charge of all of it.
I think we can compare them because...
All the public hearings would be through you.
Even on the selectman's proposal?
I think that would be useful to the public to understand before...
And you don't compare it all, all three of them.
Right, yeah. Yeah, give them all the information, might as well. That'd be the best.
I wouldn't want to be put in the position of being the spokesperson for the...
That's it, exactly, yeah.
So we'll invite them to attend.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's on the fifth Thursday works.
Joe, if we can get him.
Yep. I would imagine they'll have him attend.
Well, I mean, the first and the third Thursday work as well if they don't have a meeting scheduled.
Right, it works for us, so it shouldn't work for them.
So the chairman just asked if we set the date next, at our next meeting. So there's still plenty of time for it. We can have whatever on the agenda for discussion anytime.
So I don't have a calendar, Tom.
Nineteen.
Could we get, could we get...
It's the next meeting, right?
At least two public hearings in private. What's our draft date for the last public hearing?
You have to have had one before May 10. That's 30 days prior to. It's not the town meeting, it's the last, right.
Right. May 10. So we could have one the first Thursday in May would be our last one, right?
So you want to have one on the last week, goes April, and then again next week?
It would be a week later.
No, I think we should have the first week of April and the first week of May so that... because the first week of April, we have our meetings, so it wouldn't conflict with the selectmen, and the same with the first weekend. Or we can have it on the fifth, fifth Thursday in April for the second one. I think we should definitely do it, at least.
I'm getting confused. Why can't we just have it in the context of our regular meeting?
That's what I'm proposing for the first Thursday in April, which would be one of our regular meetings, would be the first one, and the second would be the date to already select the fifth Thursday in April.
We call that one our official one. Ted, what do you think?
I'm totally...
I guess so. I would think they'd both be official, right?
Yeah, but I mean...
Well, that would be the one where the selectmen would also attend if they...hopefully they'd attend both of them, but they have to at least attend that one.
Yeah, right.
Because I don't think they have to.
They don't have...well, I don't know.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, you know, I'm looking to be informed too, so.
Yeah, yep.
So did we set a date then?
Oh, next time I check, I'll do that.
That's what you requested.
Well, tentatively, what would we ask Chip for the dates?
I make a motion that we tentatively schedule two dates for public hearings, one on the first Thursday in April, which is one of our regularly scheduled meetings.
What, oh, that?
I don't have a calendar right in front of me.
April 2nd.
And one for the fifth Thursday in April.
To April 30th.
And to be voted upon at the next meeting.
To be voted upon?
Well, I don't know. I'm just making, I'm making a motion that we select those two dates and then vote upon it at the next meeting, just to kind of have them in the works, but not, you know...
And the last, if there was, if there was a need for it, we could hold one as late as May 5, is that right? I would see that being a need for it.
May 5 is Tuesday.
We could do it May 7th, yeah. Yeah.
You could. Just remember all of these hearings that there's a lot of advertising, there's a lot of posting.
For an official meeting, for official posted public hearing. So if it's just on the agenda for discussion, you can have a public hearing, but the official one would be one specific day. That met all the criteria. Unless you guys want to put it in the paper.
That's kind of what I was suggesting, that we have two official ones that's in the paper twice just for public notice and information, but that's my own personal...that's what I was trying to convey in my motion.
What to say to Diana, we could do it along the lines of, well, you don't want to advertise it too far and fancy it.
It has to be, I believe, seven days and 14 days in the paper twice, seven days and 14 days.
Do we have a bunch of that? You must. We don't have the best ad. Well, what's the thinking from other folks here on the weekends?
What was the last public hearing that we had? Was that was not an official public hearing?
No, a workshop.
The one we had? That where we voted to just to...
On the 19th was...
On our amendment, where after which we couldn't change it?
We listed that as informational. You could change it that night, but remember it had to be through the selectmen like two days later.
That night, yeah.
That's why.
So that wasn't an official meeting?
That didn't mean the requirement, so if you're on, that's no...
Okay. But we only have to have one.
I think one's enough personally. I mean, if you advertise it well enough, I haven't been exactly overwhelmed with attendance at most two periods. I think, you know, one...
Well, we can have one official one, and then the other two preceding it. I mean, if we want to vote for a board April 2, April 30, and May 7, you could leave your official one till May 7 and have two informational meetings preceding it. As you say, you know, we've got what, two people up.
Right, it's the same people. It's going to be the same four people. And if they've been to one, they're not going to come to three.
My assumption's going to be on the agenda the whole, till June, and maybe even in July and August.
Well, we need to...you want to restate your motion, Karen?
I guess so. I don't know if it's necessary and we're just going to vote on it next time anyway, right? I make a motion that we hold two official public hearings regarding this information, and the proposed dates would be the first Thursday, April 2nd, yeah, and the fifth Thursday, April 30th, in order to give enough time for the public to give input on these issues.
April 30th would be a special meeting for us. Do we have to have a, we need to have a special meeting?
That was Chip's suggestion.
It was what Chip was hoping.
Definitely. Why not just make it the seventh Thursday?
I didn't question him, that was just his suggestion.
He just said that's what his preference was, he hoping we vote on it next week.
He may have conflict or something. Yeah. Do you know if he's going to be the next week?
He didn't say. He did ask us to wait and vote at the next meeting, so I assumed he thought he was going to.
I can make a motion that we just table it, decide on the next meeting, and that's fine.
We discussed some dates, I mean, minutes that we discussed some potential dates.
Did anyone second the motion?
No. That's what I'm trying to get at.
So it died to lack of second?
Yeah.
But you can't have minutes that we did discuss some potential dates, I think you can.
Sure. Yeah. It's good to remember. Any other comments about what's going on with this process? I'm hoping somebody else besides myself, does anyone know if Bob is going to be back to town by next Wednesday?
It's the following Wednesday, isn't it? You're talking the assessor?
Yeah. James said next Wednesday.
I had it as the 18th. Let me check it out before she leaves.
Do you know what time, meeting with the assessors, do you know what time?
She said 11:00. Can I give Asha some of this, though?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. And do we have a link posted so that people could, if they want to?
The link for...that link that they, I got this from?
The best call-out section.
Posted where? Sent it to the board members, you mean?
We could do that, or we could just have it on the planning board website so that people could access it on their own if they chose to.
I have to clear that with upstairs.
Do we have these three proposals on the planning board website right now?
I haven't yet, no, but I can.
That would be a good thing to have.
I can put ours up. I don't...
Right, that would be good start, yeah, for sure.
I could put that up on...
Does anyone feel that we ought to...first of all, let me back up for a minute. What was the vote on our proposal? Was it unanimous?
No, it was...
Okay. Does anyone feel uncomfortable making a recommendation vote at some point in time regarding the selectmen's proposal? Either it would be made in the context of a public hearing, or we could ask the selectmen to include it on the, in the warrant, you know, the way the finance committee is, I don't know, planning board recommendations pertain to just zoning anyway, but I don't know if they have made a practice in the past of printing recommendations. I would think they don't.
I would wait till after the public hearings, I think.
Yeah. But I mean, is anyone...we've made our commitment here, we ought not to be shy about expressing publicly.
Do you mean in the warrant underneath the chapter, where it says...
Exactly, yeah.
Planning board recommendations.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it would be advantageous to vote on, select these two articles just to differentiate the two when it comes to the town meeting. People say, "Oh..." I mean, it depends if we approve all of them, then they wouldn't be differentiated by our vote. But if we said we liked the one we initially had, we don't like the other proposal, then it would be a clear difference.
Yeah, that's what I was...
I think it would be a good idea to vote on, but...
That's what I was getting to, that the voters would know that we are recommending one and not recommending the other.
The 18th.
18.
Yeah. Two weeks out.
18 at 11:00 a.m.
I think I had it, but I'm getting a little bit of other stuff.
He'll be around.
Yeah.
All right. And what does his name?
Dennis, the one that I usually deal with.
Is it, and his last name is O'Donnell, or is it another guy?
He works for, he's just an assessor for O'Donnell's. He was actually...
Are they a main firm? Any other questions to discuss?
Well, just up to date you guys, the planning board will be holding all the public hearings, be in charge of it anyways, even the selectmen's, and then move to a referendum question for the ballots, too. All the questions would be referendum, won't be at town meeting.
Ours as well?
Yep.
We didn't ask, yeah?
That's what they're doing, so...
So when would that take, please?
Election Day.
That's what...
Tuesday.
The Tuesday before a town meeting.
Yeah.
So you...
On the primaries.
It's June 9.
June 9. So there's three referendum questions along with the regular town elections.
Is there any room for discussion on that, or boom, that's how it is?
I think that's how they've set it.
Well, that would, in my mind, immediately make our public hearings more important, because we can't stand up on the town floor and advocate for this.
The good thing is you're going to have 600 people's opinion versus 30.
Right.
You're going to have a better sense of the public.
Yeah.
And you've got two directions you're going. One is more protection, the, you know, the thought of it in the end is less, so it's going to give you a really good census on how to carry next year.
Well, they're both less...
Deregulating, yeah.
One's just more of a challenge.
What was your take on the, on the issue, if they, if they both pass?
The only conflict... The only conflicting one would be the planning board allowing people to build in resource protection outside of the shoreline, which are those black areas. Now, if that passes, then you can build in that area. And then if the selectmen's warrant passes that removes that, you can build in them anyways. So either way, you'd be able to build in them.
Right.
One would be with conditional uses with you guys. The other would be a lot disappears altogether. So that would have to fail in years pass for those to be conditional uses. Otherwise, they're gonna disappear.
I'm not sure I understand that. If they, maybe it doesn't, it's not worth talking about. It would be nice to have a plan there. If they both passed, ours being more stringent because it
But the, the resource to protect isn't there. Even though yours is stringent, they're erased. So there's nothing to be more stringent about. So when you redo the map, all those black dots are gone. Now, if somebody comes in and wants to build in that area, they're not in resource protection out of the shoreline zone. So that really would, if it ended in the zoning ordinance, it would never be used.
This is, this is the wrong map.
Correct.
Kenny, you know, we actually need
The two?
Two of two. Because we can't differentiate on this one. We don't know what's, where the threshold is. You know, where 10 is and where the smaller is. Because everything's got this brown buffer that's
The black would be the proposed to be removed. Whether it's a 50-foot buffer or a 250-foot buffer.
So everything that you've left remaining that's not marked in black, we assume is greater than 10 acres?
Or in the shoreline zone, or protected by other means.
Okay.
So There's another option too, though, because if they're first, they have two proposals. If the first one passed and our first one passed, then it'll just be conditional use in any resource protection district in the town. If their second one didn't pass, then, you know, both would take in action. You know what I'm saying? It would be conditional use within the resource protection outside the shoreline, but also within the shoreline. If that's what their number one, if that's the big exchange with theirs.
Well, theirs would be just resource detection. It would be in and out of them.
Right, right.
So if theirs passed in years, theirs would theirs would all be allowing, years would be allowing.
But it would be pretty similar for outside of, you know.
It'd be the same thing, conditional use to the planning board, so.
Right.
So on the March 19th, the next meeting, set the dates. And then we can go from there.
And it's up in the air whether we'll have two or three.
Or one.
Or one. We didn't
I guess we got another one. And the proposed referendum validated is June 9.
Can, how soon can we have them up against the new town meeting?
30 days.
So, okay, so as soon as the 30 days we can have them up against the town?
No, 30 days, at least 30 days before the election. So from now to that, to that May 10 date, you can have them if you wanted.
Okay, and then after May 10?
No later than May 10.
We can't have any more?
In months.
Not in meet the criteria.
Right.
As long as you have one that meets the criteria, you can have them after that.
Informational sessions during that.
Okay.
It looks like there's six meeting nights that would be between now and then that would, you could have on the agenda.
Which people might get more interested as it gets closer. Then with the referendum, there's kind of run the risk of people going to the polls not knowing.
The problem is the ballots are the absentee ballots are available May 8.
Okay.
So that's why you wanna get as much
Yeah, and this is a lot to absorb to go into.
Yeah, if you're hitting it all.
Yeah.
It would be nice if maybe they, they had a public hearing with Dennis from O'Donnell's for the public as well as for the planning board to kind of get our arms around their, you know, their thinking on that. Because we, you know, we don't have the, I don't have the experience to really make an informed vote on that proposal because I'm trying to get educated in a
Assessment?
Yeah. What do you all say? Also, Jay? What?
Say it again.